Clerk Seagres, can you please do roll call? Oh.
Hi, Summer, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
I'm here.
Ganguley.
I'm here.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect Clerk Seagres is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
And let the record reflect it, Trustee Snyderman is absent.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the slight update for item G eight? Consider reappointments in the Canton Tax Board of Review. Somebody who could not, who make the committee.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for February fourteenth and twenty-first, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Now, this is a public comment time for public comment on agenda items only. I will look online first. So we have three people online. If you have any public comment on the agenda items only, please raise your hand. Public comment on agenda items only, on agenda items only. Okay, nothing online. Any in the audience on agenda items only? Nope, okay. All right, great. There's another public comment period at the end. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. We have now, we have a recognition for an LSAC member, recognition of service. Director Homberger, do you want to approach the podium?
Thank you very much. We have Rob Musso, who has been the chair, longstanding chair of the Leisure Services Advisory Committee, and we have John LaFevere with us, our current deputy director, who has participated in on the advisory committee with Rob and I for a number of years. Rob took a look at when he started on the Leisure Services Advisory Committee was May of 2006, and then he started as the chair on the advisory committee in March of 2009 and served as the chair from 2009 through the end of 2022. So for a number of years, was that about 11 years if I do the math right? So he's been on the...
More if I do the math.
Little more. So, yes, 13. Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm Parks and Rec, not math, so. So Rob Musso has served as a member of the Leisure Services Advisory Committee since 2006. The Leisure Services Advisory Commission, through interaction with the community, provides the department input and guidance as Canton Leisure Services tries to enhance health, family, and community through innovative programs, diverse services, and premier facilities. As ambassadors for the department, the commission promotes the endless benefits of leisure services. During his 15-year tenure, 13 of those are serving as chairs. See, we got that right on here. Should have read this instead of trying to do head math. Chair Musso has provided valuable contribution as an advocate of the Leisure Services Department. Rob is an active member of the community who is passionate for Canton's parks and recreation. The Leisure Services Advisory Committee Staff and Township Board hereby recognizes and commends Rob Musso for volunteering his time, sharing his expertise, and being an important part of growing, of growing the Canton community. So, what's that? Thank you, Rob. Got this for you. If you want to say anything.
You're welcome to.
Well, thank you. I'll just, I'll just say thank you so much. It has really been an honor to, to serve in this role and be able to participate in Canton in this way. We, we love this community, had a chance to live here once and moved away for work, and when we were coming back to this area, chose Canton again. It's been a great experience to live here, raise our kids here, and it's been an honor to be part of the, part of the Leisure Services Committee. It's a great group of people, and they do a great job supporting the Leisure Services Department, which I don't need to tell all of you, is, is a great organization and provides so many great services for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe Trustee Borninski wanted to add something also.
Yes, Rob, first...
She's going to embarrass me.
Oh, no, I'm not.
That's so kind.
No, I just want to thank you for your service and your dedication and your advocacy. When I started on the committee a couple of years ago, you were very welcoming, and I appreciated that very much. And I, I can't think of someone who could be a better chair. You are just wonderful at it. You have such a nice, calm, unassuming manner, but you're also a diplomat. So I very much appreciate your service and dedication to not only the township, but to leisure, leisure services. So thank you.
Well, thank, thank you, Trustee Borninski. It's been a pleasure to have you on the committee. We've had, in that tenure, a number of trustees represent the board to the committee, and you have been a great representative and then advocate back to the board for us. So thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution. Last year, we read a, read a resolution for Black History Month, and this year Treasurer Slavens wrote one for Black History Month for this year.
All righty. And I'm going to read the resolution. Resolution recognizing the significance of Black History Month. Whereas the theme of Black History Month for 2023 is Black Resistance, the theme honors and recognizes the resistance and of historic and ongoing oppression of Black Americans. Whereas the first Americans, Africans were brought involuntary to the shores of America as early as the 17th century, suffering enslavement and subsequently faced injustices of lynch mobs, segregations, and denial of basic fundamental rights. Whereas despite slavery, African Americans in all walks have, of life have made a significant contribution throughout history in the United States. Whereas beginning in the early decades of the 20th century, African Americans' migration patterns included relocation from the rural south to northern and midwestern cities. Whereas such migrations resulted in more diverse and stratified interracial and interracial urban population amid the changing social milieu. Whereas racial suburbanation has resulted in stable integration and economic opportunity in Canton. Whereas the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass inspired the creation of Negro History Week, the persecr- of Black History Month. Whereas the month of February is officially celebrated as Black History Month, which dates back to 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period of time to recognize the heritage and achievement of Black Americans. Now, therefore be it, resolved that the Board of Trustees of Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize the significance of Black History Month as an important time to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of African Americans in the nation's history, and encourages the continued celebration of this month to provide an opportunity for all people to learn about the past and better understand the experiences which shape our township, and recognize the ethnic and racial diversity of Canton enriches and strengthens the township.
For...
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Clerk Seagres. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Any board comments on that? No? Thank you. Next item is the Consent Calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider second reading of an amendment to Chapter 14, Animals in the Canton Township Code of Ordinances Regarding Restitution for Medical Expenses. Item C2, consider approval of payment for water meters. C3, receive and file the Planning Commission 2022 Annual Report. C4, consider approving a six-month extension to the embedded social worker contract with Hagera Health Incorporated. C5, request budget amendment for the carryover of fiscal year 2022 open purchases orders to fiscal year 2023. And finally, item C6, request approval for a one-year annual maintenance agreement for Tyler Technologies New World Systems ERP.
Support.
Made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we move on to the general calendar. Item G1, consider two contracts, one to Bidigear Contractors Incorporated and the other to OHM Advisors for the Joy Road and PRV Water Main Capital Improvement Project and approve a budget amendment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award contracts as presented in the amount of totaling $1,784,602 to Bidigear Contractors Incorporated and $143,272 to OHM for the Joy Road and PRV Water Main CIP and to authorize a township supervisor or clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The 2018 Water Master Plan identified a number of projects necessary to meet the existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition to the master plan, staff is constantly evaluating locations that are experiencing multiple main breaks in a relatively small area. Staff is recommending award of contract to Bidigear Contractors Incorporated for the Joy Road and PRV Water Main Capital Improvement Project with the following breakdowns. Contract amount $1,551,828, contingency amount 15%, $232,774, total amount $1,784,602. This awarded contract is based on the requests for proposals received on February 2nd, 2023. Two proposals were submitted. Staff evaluated these proposals based on the responsible contractor policy. Staff is also recommending continuation of contract for construction management and inspection services to OHM with the following breakdown. Contract amount $136,450, contingency amount 5%, $6,822, total amount $143,272. In December of 2021, OHM was awarded the design and construction bidding process work for this project. Deputy Norwood, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the emergency repair of police department vehicle PD 2076.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve repairs to PD 2076 at Blackwell Ford, 41001 Plymouth Road, Plymouth, Michigan, 4170, in the amount of $11,741.95. Plus a 25% contingency of $2,935.49 for a total amount not to exceed $14,677.44.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Borninski. Police department vehicle PD 2076 has significant roof damage caused by the light bar contacting the garage door while backing out of police department garage. Repair of the vehicles requested due to the age, three years, mileage 64,920 miles, and lack of availability of a replace- replacement. Last order for six police interceptors was submitted in February 2022, and there's still no delivery date. Fleet Services obtained two estimates for repair of the vehicle, one from Gerber Collision and the other from Blackwell Ford. Gerber Collision estimated the cost to repair at $19,568.91. Estimated cost to repair at Blackwell Ford is $11,741.95. Due to significant difference in estimates, it is requested that the board approve repairs through Blackwell Ford. Time for Blackwell Ford to complete the work is approximately three to four weeks. In addition to the estimated 25% contingency equals to $2,935.49 is also being requested as it is possible that the final cost to repair could exceed the estimate due to unforeseen damage and extra labor. This would bring the total repair cost up to $14,677.44. The approximate cost of a new vehicle is $42,765. Therefore, the cost to repair is only 34% of a new vehicle and will allow PD 2076 to be returned to service much faster than waiting for a replacement. Let's see, Deputy Dave or Director Baugh, do you want to add anything?
Appreciate the consideration. We need the vehicles in service. I know Mr. Norwood's office has been doing a lot of work to get vehicles here.
Yeah, I have nothing further to add. We want to get it back on the road as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Can you describe what happened to the vehicle and the garage door? I'm just curious.
Pick me up.
Actually, I don't recall if this was an error or an accident. I know someone in the room might know.
I might be able to speak to that. I believe that the officer was backing out of the garage, and the sensor on the garage door was not working, and the garage door came out. It changed, they improved the sensor in the garage door.
Just wondering if insurance will cover this?
Not certain. I'd have to ask risk management on that. We've had a number of issues with that garage door over the years. It's constantly going up and down for different reasons, but...
Sounds like mine at my house.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G3, approval of the First Amendment to the Berkshire Apartments Plan Development District.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of Plan Development District number, amendment number one for Berkshire Apartments. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of amendment, of amendment number one to the Plan Development District for Berkshire Apartments, planned, the subject planned application located on the north side of Salts Road between Canton Center Road and Beck Road. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the amended Plan Development Plan and Plan Development Agreement and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the request with conditions as it meets the criteria for a plan development, results in definite benefits to the community, and complies with the applicable site designs requirements of the zoning ordinance, except where modifications are approved. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, is hereby approve amendment number one to the Berkshire Apartments Plan Development, Plan Development and associated site plan changes in the subject application, the subject tax parcel as proposed in the planned development agreement and plan documents subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. At its meeting in November 24, 2020, the Township Board of the Trustees approved approval of the final Plan Development District and site plan for Berkshire Apartments, which is a project of 172 apartment units on the approximately 24.63 acres. The project site is located on the north side of Salts Road, west of Waterside Road, which is west of Canton Center Road. Since that time, the applicant has made changes to the internal sidewalk network to make it more accessible to the residents. As a result of adding sidewalk in front of several buildings, many buildings have been moved back to meet the 22-foot front yard setback requirement between the front of the unit and the sidewalk, which allows adequate space for parking in a driveway. Therefore, the PDD must be amended to account for the resulting changes to the schedule of modifications, which are modifications from certain requirements of the zoning ordinance that are permitted through the formal PDD process. There are no changes to the number of units, open spaces, or setbacks to adjacent parcels. At its meeting on February 6, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PD amendment. If the PD amendment is approved, the applicant will coordinate revisions with the Engineering Services Division and Building and Inspection Services Division. Deputy Dave, do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything else to add, but the community planner, Patrick Solon, is here to answer any questions.
Summer, do you have anything to add? Any questions or comments? Kate?
All right, I guess I'm asking a lot of questions tonight. Just wondering, if the buildings are moved back to meet the setback requirements, then where is the land being taken from? Is it the back behind them, or? It says that the open space requirements are still met, so...
Right. The, the balance of the, the setback is the spacing between the units themselves. So anyone who lives on an adjacent parcel, those setbacks are not going to be impacted. So the buildings, where they're impacted, will be clustered closer together. And the displacement of the open space will be where the sidewalk previously existed on the opposite side of the road where there were no residences. The removal of that sidewalk will be added to the open space balance.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the purchase of four Motorola 800 megahertz mobile radios.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of four Motorola mobile radios from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $24,515.38, utilizing E911 funds.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Fire Department is requesting to purchase two Motorola APX 6500 mobile radios and two Motorola SPX 650003 handheld mobile radios in the total amount of $24,515.38. Due to the necessity of continuity in radio equipment, purchasing the same radio is currently owned as imperative. Therefore, the department requests to waive the bidding process and purchase the above model radios from Motorola Solutions, a sole source vendor. Funds budgeted in the 2023 E911 Capital Computers account will be utilized for this purchase. I see Chris is online. Do you have anything to add?
I'm breaking up a lot, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approving a one-year contract renewal with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group Incorporated and associated amendments to the 2023 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a one-year contract renewal for police legal services with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group LLC in the amount of $34,560, and to approve the attached budget amendment to the 2023 police budget.
All right. Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Borninski. The police department is requesting to renew its annual contract with the Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group, MPLAG, for legal advice on administrative and operational issues, department policies, and legal update training. The contract renewal is based on 144 hours per year and is paid in monthly installments for a total of cost of $34,560. In addition, the police department is requesting an amendment to its 2023 budget for this expense. Director Baugh, do you want to add anything?
Yes. This contract also assumes a responsibility with the PTAG Group, the Police Transparency and Guidance Subcommittee, which was covered by a $40,000 grant, of which $20,000 went to Brett Numchuff. And the other technical advisor from Michigan State University received the other $20,000. That grant now has expired, so the additional monies will be used to maintain Brett as a technical advisor for PTAG.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G6, request approval to renew Office 365 licensing.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the township purchasing policy requirement to publish a request for proposal for this purchase and to approve the creation of purchase orders in the amount not to exceed $170,000 to Dell Computers for the 2023 renewal of the township's multi-year agreement with Microsoft for Microsoft 365 services.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In April 2022, the township migrated email services and adopted the full Microsoft Office 365 services by entering into a three-year agreement with Microsoft. The first of the year of the agreement expires on 4/30/2023, and renewal through Dell Computers should be initiated 45 days prior to that date. Director Rebegbu, do you have anything to add?
Not really, but I can take questions.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider authorization of 2024 purchase of golf carts for Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek Golf Club.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of 240 gasoline golf cars for Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek Golf Clubs from Midwest Golf and Turf at 2111 Hagerty Road, Commerce Township, Michigan, 4390, for a total amount of $744,274 to be paid from the subject account number listed for goods on order. A 2023 PO will be entered, but will not be expensed until 2024.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On December 15, 2022, CLS staff advertised an invitation to bid for purchase or lease of golf carts. As a result, four companies submitted a proposal with Midwest Golf and Turf, proposing the lowest cost of $715,674 total after the trade-in value of 209 carts were subtracted. Additionally, Fellows Creek is requesting to purchase two club car carryalls with portable refreshment centers and an additional cost of $28,600. Fellows Creek has $33,000 in the 2024 capital budget for beverage carts. Therefore, Canton Leisure Services is recommending to purchase 240 club cars and two carryalls with portable refreshment centers for a total of $744,274. Director Homberger, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, certainly. I'd like to commend our staff on being very intelligent about the way that they went about bidding these golf carts. They are, there's a long lead time, which we're taking, planning on receiving these golf carts in March of 2024, prior to next season, but there are many courses that are not planning as head, ahead as well as us, which is resulting in us getting significantly more on our trade-in value for our current carts than what we had previously received and what we anticipated. I think it's over $1,000 more per cart than what we received last time we did this type of trade-in, which is resulting in us being significantly under our anticipated budget, which really helps us out at the golf course. So I'd like to commend our staff for being forward-looking and thinking ahead and getting this bid out early.
Questions or comments? Tanya?
I have a quick operational question. How, like, what percentage of are we replacing, replacing the entire fleet, or is it...
Entire fleet at both courses, yes.
That's, that's the, that has, that has always been the process in the past?
Yes.
We will be fine for five years, six years?
Hopefully longer than that. This, this current fleet, I think, will be eight or nine years old after, after, by next spring. So we anticipate at least seven years out of this current fleet.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G8, which is this new one, consider reappointments to the Canton Tax Board of Review.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board of Trustees approve the appointments of Ifran Joffrey, Elizabeth Manuel, and Paul Towar to the Canton Tax Board of Review for two-year terms to expire on 3/1/25, and to approve the appointments of Ethan Petzold to the alternate position for the Canton Tax Board of Review with a term to expire on 3/1/25.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Tax Board of Review is a three-member board required by state law who hear property assessment appeals. Canton has always tried to maintain two, three-member boards plus an alternate, alternate member so we can offer more times to the residents who are making appeals. The Tax Board of Review hears appeals two to, two times per year, March and December. Four Board of Review members have terms expiring in March of 2023. The supervisor is recommending reappointment for Elizabeth Manuel, Ifran Joffrey, Paul Towar, and Ethan Petzold. Do you have any questions or comments? Interviews, no? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider appointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board.
Madam Supervisor, if it would please you, I'll make this a one resolution. I move that the Canton Township Board of Trustees appoint John Camp, Jacob Uwazi, and Kyle Selter to the, serve on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Development Authority for the Charter Township of Canton for a four-year term beginning February 28, 2023, and ending February 28, 2028.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Foster. State of Michigan Public Act 197 of 1975, enabling legislation for the establishment of a Downtown Development Authority, provides for a Board of A- of a downtown development authority, provides for a board of eight to 12 members. A majority of the members must have an interest located in the development area, owner of property, owner of a business, manager, employee, and resident, while the two remaining members may be citizens at large. The DDA currently has three vacancies to fill, two citizen representatives, and one business representative. So this was, anybody want to make a comment on Summer?
Sure. So we've been doing these interviews for about three years now, I think. And I think this was the toughest set that we've done so far. Trustee Borninski, Supervisor Graham Hudak, and I think we interviewed 12 candidates for DDA, right, back-to-back with Canton Cares and the Cultural and Heritage Commission. And so I think there was about, what, two weeks of interviews that we did. But these three candidates that we're appointing to the DDA, I think, stood head and shoulders above some of the other candidates. But they were great, too. So I would love to see them, you know, apply for other commissions and, you know, want to continue to be involved with the township. But this was a great experience, but it was a lengthy experience. But it was great to have so many good people applying.
Great.
Yeah, as Trustee Foster said, we had quite a few interviews and had a lot of fabulous people apply. It was amazing how many great people, you know, it made the, made it difficult. But I think these three really have the backgrounds that will be an asset to the, to the DDA. And so I think it's going to be great.
Yes, and people are wanting to apply for committees, so that's great. More people want to get involved. So that's a good sign. I see Jacob and John also online. All right, all those in favor of the...
I have a question. So this is going to be the board that's going to be approving or helping us with the MDOT program?
On Ford Road.
On Ford Road. Did that factor in any of the questions that you asked them at all or how you were, I'd be curious?
Yeah, that was the question that we asked all of the candidates about how they felt about the Boulevard project, how they thought we should reach out to businesses and make sure that residents knew how to navigate some of the construction and just making sure that folks had, you know, ideas really about how the corridor was supposed to look, how we wanted it to look when it's done. And so, yeah, we definitely asked those questions during the process.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, that was, I'm sorry, G 10. G 10, consider approving Merit Commission recommendation for position reclassification and new position of Human Resources Associate.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the Merit Commission recommendation to reclassify the position of Human Resources Specialist Grade Four to the position of Human Resources Coordinator Grade Six. I further move to approve the Merit Commission recommendation to create the Human Resources Associate Position Grade Four and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Supervisor's Office is requesting the Board of Trustees approve the retitle and reclassification of the Human Resources Specialist Grade Four to the Human Resources Coordinator Grade Six. Additionally, a request is being made to the Board of Trustees to approve a new position of Human Resources Associate Grade Four. The retitle and reclassification of the Human Resources Specialist, as well as a new position of Human Resources Associate, were approved at the December 12, 2022 Merit Commission meeting. So I think I, all of you had known about that Merit Commission meeting. Does anyone have any questions? We have Rochelle here in the audience. She had taken one of the positions and made it into two. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G 11, consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers' Association of Michigan, POAM.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and Police Officers' Association of Michigan with the term ending December 31, 2026, and authorize the township supervisor, oh, sorry, sign on behalf of Canton Township.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The current collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers' Association of Michigan, POAM, expired on December 31, 2022. The parties have come to an agreement on terms for a new four-year agreement expiring on December 31, 2026. The POAM has already ratified the new agreement. Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything to add?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I see we have Alex in here, the, representing the union. Do you have anything to add? Sure.
Good evening. Through the process, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm a police officer with Canton Police Department and the president of the POAC, which is the local for the POAM. Wanted to thank you for the consideration of accepting the tentative agreement. We hope this will make the police organization competitive to attract and retain the professional police officers that Canton has always strived to hire to serve this community. We believe that this agreement will help Canton to maintain a reputation as a leader where people come to live, work, and play for future generations. So thank you again for helping us out with this agreement.
Thank you. Thank you. Director Bod, do you want to add anything?
I appreciate the patience. I know it's been a long road, and I appreciate the work by Alex and our deputy supervisor to get us here. Thank you.
Board, any questions or comments? Summer?
I'll just say thank you to everyone who worked really hard to get this done. I know it was a process, but want to thank everyone for their commitment to making sure that we have the best public safety department in Michigan. So thank you all.
Yeah, I concur with Summer. Like, we have been hearing about this for a long time, that you all are working together. And I hope this makes our department, you know, attract more new officers in the future. And so we can make this, you know, we already have a great department, police department, and we can make, you know, we can attract new talent from the community.
Michael?
Well, I think first I want to thank everybody who participated in, on the administrative side, first and foremost, for the work they put in, the thoughtfulness, the diligence. You know, this, this was a process to get to where we are today. And so thank you for that. Thank you for listening and representing the board really well in that process. And then I want to thank the union leadership as well for doing so, for your membership. I understand it was a tight one. And while it doesn't get everybody to where they, everybody to where they want to be, this is a historic investment in public safety and police. Canton hasn't made this kind of investment in the police department in a very, very long time. And, and I know that, you know, we have been struggling over the last few years to fill positions in the police department. And this is a tool that I'm told we can recruit with. And I'm hoping that that will ease some of the pain and the stress on our officers because I think first and foremost, the reason we chose Canton, among many of the beautiful things that we have here, is because Canton is a safe community, and it's not that way by accident. And so thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Supervisor's Office. And I'm voting yes on this.
Thank you.
Hey. Ditto. Everybody else said it better than I can. So thank you to everyone involved.
I will say thank you, too. I agree with all that's been set up here, and we are looking forward to hopefully growing the police department. So thank you.
Yes, thanks you to the negotiating team on the union side and the management side over here. I know it was a long nights and long discussions, and I'm glad we got there. And I'm looking forward to us being over 100 very soon, that people are just going to start flocking into Canton to want to work here. That's going to happen very soon. But good job. You guys did a great job. And I'm really looking forward to the signing. Thank you for all the hard work. Thank you. Thank you. Great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Yay. Item G 12, consider a request to approve Merit Commission recommendation for Resident Service Advocate for three years.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the Merit Commission recommendation to create the Resident Service Advocate Grade Five for a three-year period at the following budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township is a growing community, both in population and diversity, committed to excellent resident service. The Resident Service Advocate will be a professional position responsible for creating an internal service structure which improves communication and accountability between residents and Canton Township. The advocate will ensure the facilitation of timely and professional service to all Canton residents. The position will play an integral role in communicating the needs of residents to township government and resolving a number of resident concerns across township functions. The position of Resident Service Advocate is approved at the November 9, 2022 Merit Commission meeting and is grade five on the merit scale. After three years, a report will be given to the board showing the Resident Service Advocate's impact in the community. Director, Joe, do you want to add, Deputy Director, do you want to add anything?
No, we discussed this at the board retreat a couple of weeks ago. I think that the board has made a, well, not made a decision yet, but the suggestion of doing the position for three years makes sense. It's a measured approach, and I look forward to showing the impact that this position has in the community.
Questions or comments? Tanya.
Yeah, we have been talking about, you know, having, how we can get communication from the community to, to the township. And I think this position will really help in that. We have many ways of dispersing communication from the township to the community, but not the other way around. So I think this will be a great opportunity. And I'm glad that we are, you know, we are going to use some metrics to measure how this is going to help our community, because we always have questions. And I think sometimes people don't know who to contact, contact the Supervisor's Office, or they come to a board meeting. So I think this will be a great opportunity for our residents to, you know, voice their concerns or ask questions.
Hey.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. But I'm wondering how we are going to evaluate it. Like, will we have any method of evaluating how it's working?
Yeah, I think it will be first by response times. You know, right now, that's not something that's readily measured across township functions. It is in certain departments, but there's differences between departments and how that's done. Secondly, I think is resident feedback, right? Getting feedback from the residents to find, you know, how effective they view the service as well.
Will, will the board get a report or some kind of follow-up on that?
Yes.
Looked at some software programs also. So if a person goes to one department and asks a question, and they come up to the Supervisor's Office right away, because they don't sometimes like what they hear, and that will be registered in the computer, and you'll be able to see where they've been and who they've spoken to. And also, there will be follow-up that can tie it all together. So we've looked at a couple of packages already. Michael?
I like that the background information on this RBA references, I guess subtly the elimination of the Administrative Services Division or Department, which used to exist at the township. The Administrative Services Department was a, was an interesting department that did a lot of work at the township. And it was stripped apart during the recession, and its parts were sold off to different departments for budgetary reasons, right? And you understand why you do that during a recession, because you've got to keep afloat. But there is not, there's a cost. There's a cost to every one of those decisions. Sometimes the cost is borne out in what the contract looks like for some folks and whether or not you can recruit police officers. Sometimes the cost is how we operate as an organization. What's, I think, interesting is, for the most part, we have, we use the political process for residents to handle concerns with how the government is performing for them, right? Issues go directly to the Supervisor's Office. But that is an interesting system that maybe sometimes allows only the squeaky wheel to get the grease, but all wheels need to be oiled, or the car falls apart. And I love, one, taking a measured approach to how we handle this. Two, I love that we are looking at some software components that could allow us to really prioritize how we, how we deal with residents and how we get feedback from the residents, right? We have a monopoly on water. We have a monopoly on sewer. We have a monopoly on policing. We have a monopoly on voting. We have a monopoly on so many things as local government that it's easy to forget that we have a constituency out there. I don't like calling them customers, because I don't like thinking about it as a commodification. But we do, you know, and, and they don't have many other options. And so I like the idea of creating this position, because Canton Township is a very large community, and we are a professional organization. But people shouldn't fall through the cracks. And I think that this will help ensure that that doesn't happen. We shouldn't be bouncing people between departments, and people shouldn't have to routinely follow up on some small things or stovepipe every issue directly to the township supervisor, who's really got a big job, especially when people don't have power and there's some serious stuff going on in the community. So I think this is a smart move. And I like the idea of not only having this reactive position that is going to be handling situations, but also having a proactive approach, too, where we're going to start engaging the community on feedback. That's smart. And it puts public service and community service, service, at the core of what we do. So I like this. I'm voting yes.
Thank you. And as you said in the background, it also talks about, so Canton Township has over 200 HOAs. So this will be an enhanced service to many homeowners associations. Whenever we have the Know Your Neighbor events every six months, that's one of the things that they ask for. They say they really miss that position that can help them get through some of the issues between the township and themselves, or even between adjacent HOAs. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 13, consider request to approve agreement for consulting services between Canton Township and Capital Relationships LLC.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an agreement with Capital Services LLC through the end of 2024 and to approve the attached budget adjustment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Given the number of issues that impact township government, the need to work with a consulting service to advocate for Canton Township of Wayne County and Lansing has been a necessity. Canton has been working with Capital Relationships for over one year with the tangible results for the community, including success in enhanced road funding, funding for sidewalk improvements, existing programs, and funding for transformative projects in the Canton community. Capital Relations has also helped the township in important policy matters at the county and state level. We're requesting the board approve an agreement with Capital Relations LLC to represent Canton Township in Wayne County and Lansing for $5,000 per month through the end of 2024. Director, Deputy Director, do you want to add anything?
No, I tried to put most of it in the RBA. Again, we've been working with Capital Relations for over a year as a consulting service for the township. And they've been very effective, both on the appropriations and policy side for the township. And, yeah.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, oh, sorry, didn't see you.
I'm in a talkative mood tonight. I apologize. But I also think if you don't toot your own horn, nobody else will. So we've got to. You know, we've had a very successful year, two years, with regards to securing funding from other sources. And what's important is a substantial amount of that is our tax dollars that gets sent to Lansing or Washington, DC. And it'll get, it'll get spent very quickly. And it'll get spent in other communities. But we've been very successful about bringing that back to Canton Township, including, you know, we got, the entire Canton Center Road repair was, that, that, that $5 million project was completely reimbursed by the State of Michigan and Wayne County. And that's money we were able to put back into the road funds, that we're able to have conversations now about doing intersection improvements we couldn't really talk about before because of how healthy that fund is. By bringing back our dollars from Lansing and from the county, that means we're going to have better roads in Canton Township. And we can't, we couldn't do that. I, I, I believe... And we can't, we couldn't do that, I believe, as effectively without the contract that we had signed last year. And so, that's huge. You know, getting $750,000 for sidewalk gaps. I mean, that's huge. It's almost a million dollars of additional sidewalk that's going to be in this community that's a board goal, that's funded. That's not the general fund. I mean, that kind of stuff is huge. And then, the expansion of T R, the Therapeutic Rec Program, $174,000, I think, for that, maybe more than that. I mean, that's, and that's a service not just for Canton Township, that's something that our neighboring communities benefit from as well. And that's, that's people's lives. That's directly benefiting people's lives. And that eases the burden on the general fund, because we were paying for that out of the general fund, and we were able to secure money from the county out of that. So, you know, I will gladly spend a dollar today to get $14 million tomorrow. That's an easy, an easy one for me. So, I was, I'm just really, I've been really impressed with this.
Million dollars for Ridge Road Park, which was directed towards Ridge Road Park?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's a very good point.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Motion passes. Item G 14. Consider reappointment to the Historic District Commission.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the reappointment of Bill Tesson to the Canton Historic District Commission for a three-year term effective through February 5, 2026.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On February 5, 2023, one term for Commissioner on the Historic District Commission expired. Commissioner Bill Tesson has agreed to serve another three-year term that will expire on February 5, 2026. Bill Tesson has served on the Commission Chairperson since 2020, and has been a contributing member to the, member to the Commission in the entire time. He is a great asset to the Commission with his knowledge, resources, and commitment to historic preservation. Bill has been, has been great, and he's hard to replace with all of his knowledge. Does anyone have any questions or comments? No? Anyone who's worked with him? I know your, our group back there has worked with him. All right.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Motion passes. I noticed Bill's not online. I was going to shout out for him. I know. So, the next item we have is public comment. Let me look online. We have three attendees for public comment. Anyone public comment? Anyone online for public comment? Okay. Anyone in the room for public comment? Okay, go ahead. Please give your name. It's three minutes. And if you have any questions that need to be followed up, the board can, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, sounds good. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name's Faith Norwood. And before you ask, that is my dad over there.
My dad?
I'm here on behalf of State Representative Kevin Coleman. I am his legislative aide. He apologizes for not being able to come tonight. His Tuesdays are his late nights in Lansing, but he does look forward to coming to meet you soon. He wanted me to come tonight and share a few things that he's done for Michigan residents during his time in the legislature. So, he's secured $1 million for senior housing, $500,000 for community center study. He helped to repeal the retirement tax, which gives retirees their hard-earned money back. He landed record funding for local schools, increased revenue sharing to cities. He invoked, voted to invest by Ford, more than $2 billion across the company's plants in Michigan. The project is expected to create more than 3,200 good-paying union jobs, and help further the company's E V future in the state, which we know is important in Michigan. He has voted to expand the working families' tax credit to 30%. This will provide an average savings of over $3,000 to $700,000 for families. He currently has a bill called the Excused Absences for the Performing of Taps Act, which would allow a student in grades six to 12 to perform taps at a veteran's funeral. This bill is in response to a shortage of people who can perform taps at a funeral. Often, taps is piped through a P A system using a pre-recorded version. He's also working on getting our kids back on track, investing in their in-class experiences, delivering free meals, and expanding tutoring and mental health services. Our office is happy to aid and answer any questions, and he looks forward to serving Canton residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know you were from our Representative Coleman's office.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's all right. Does anyone have any questions for? No? No, thank you very much. We are looking forward to it. So, thanks for introducing yourself, and we look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you for having me. You'll probably see me in the future.
Yes, I believe we're meeting with him soon to talk about some of the current-
Yeah, I called you today.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Aren't you proud, Dad? Look at that big smile. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else in the room? Public comment? Please state your name and what your question is.
George Miller, I have some concerns from last fall. I've asked the township to look into Lily Road and Ford Road area. There's hundreds of feet, a curb is demolished there, and it's out in the road, big as a cork pop bottles. I'd like to know when you're going to get it cleaned up, from the county possibly. Potholes, I mentioned it here in the last month, and call the county from Palmer Road and Canton Center Road all the way to Hagerty, especially at intersection around Hagerty. Also, Sheldon Road, coming from Van Born all the way to Cherry Hill North, the same area. I'd like to know why these potholes go for months and they're not addressed. Secondly, and I've addressed it many times, I'd like to know what the protocol is, and I put a foyer in, for people staying at the summit when it has power, and how many can be accommodated there possibly if there's a power failure? And what step-by-step can be taken if there's a future protocol, and what the protocol is now? Okay? Next, let's go to the Mund Dump, not the Mund Dump, Woodland Meadows Number One. It's in Canton. It's on the west side of Canton Road. I have a map to that effect. So, that was closed 20 years ago or so. It's supposed to be closed and not disturbed. I'd like to know why Eagle or the county has put another 50-foot of dirt on it, and evidently, it's insignificant for the drainage ditches to handle it. They're not concerned about that. I've asked them. And I want to know if there's a catch basin, like the catch stuff, like at Walmart, they have them, when there's a big massive rain in the, in the community. Myers, the same way, to hold that water for a while. Does that dump have test wells to see if it's leaking? I don't know. Back in 1980, it was there, PCB was in there. That's supposed to be a sanitary landfill, public record, that that was put in there, and the Health Department gave the okay. Now, I'd like to know what's going to be done if it leaks, and how much it would cost. Eagle can give you a cost, how much it would cost if the water would leak from that dump to get over to the Rouge River and clean it up. I would like an answer to that from the township to look into it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
One question, if I may. Since the Representatives is here, I've addressed that issue to him.
Okay. Online, I'll look online again. Do you have any hands up online? I didn't see any hands up online. No comments online? No comments online? Okay, great. Staff, do we have any comments from the staff members? About any upcoming events? No, anything? No. I know our crews and our fire and police, they did a great job with the storms this past week. And so, we've had a rough couple of weeks with storms. I know some of the residents have had a hard time. Canton has fared better than most communities, but there were still residents that still had issues with power. I got an email this morning that someone has, was still out of power. So, I will go down the, see what the board members have to say. I know some of them got some calls about things. Summer?
I don't have much to say. I know March is Women's History Month, so looking forward to, Madam Supervisor, I know you have a couple of things planned, so looking forward to that, but nothing else.
Thanks, Tanya.
Yeah, so March is also Arab-American Heritage Month. So, we have a lot of Arab-Americans in our community, so we want to maybe highlight them in our, you know, cable television and have some conversations with them. That would be a good idea, if we can do that.
If anyone wants to write any resolutions for anything, please do. Michael, do you have anything?
Just to talk about?
Yes. No, never mind. Kate?
She ass. Surprise.
Are you skipping over my phone?
Anything you want to add at the end of the evening?
No, it was a great meeting.
Good, thanks. Kate?
Just hoping that everyone's power is back on. I saw a little update from D T E this morning, and it sounded like 98% were back up. So, hoping that if there's anybody left in Canton, that that has come back already, or will in the next couple of hours. I myself was affected just barely, because I had a doctor's appointment that was a virtual one that had to be rescheduled. So, everybody's feeling it, not just, you know, me or you, but people who are doctors even, so.
Diane?
Appreciate all the hard work from our first responders during the ice storm. And I know our staff all scurried the one day. We did have to close down early, but we did put signs up and left messages for folks. Quick reminder, today was the last day for taxes. So, now, if you haven't paid your property taxes, you'll have to mail them to Wayne County. We'll be sending the roll down in the morning. And it was a good meeting.
Thank you. So, I know, just, I'm going to get back on D T E really quick. I know that we had talked about when some members did not have their power, and we had looked at opening up the summit, and Greg and John, you can probably speak to this. We don't have generator backup, so we can't be utilized by the American Red Cross as an emergency shelter at this time. But we did, with some residents, we were able to help them find shelter. And we also partnered with Livonia Rec Center, because they offered beds if we needed to send residents over there. So, that was put into place if any residents needed anything. We monitored the warming centers at the summit and the library to see if any residents needed anything. And I don't, Greg, if you want to speak to that, if you, what you saw, we know a lot of people came in to charge phones and-
Yeah, we had a handful of people come in, charge phones, warm up, stay for a little while, but nobody that was there late in the evenings, we were checking to make sure that nobody needed either shelter or warm place to go, or transportation somewhere. If we had somebody there late in the evening that needed shelter, we were prepared to either open up as a shelter or work with them to get them transported to a shelter if need be.
No, we also had cots available in the fire station that we were ready to deploy if needed. But when Livonia did make that offer, and we were able to help the residents when they came to the police, that, that really helped. So, we did not feel the need to stay open at that time, and we still monitored it over the days. Even the residents that called or emailed that they still didn't have power, when they were asked if they needed shelter, they all said no. They had found some place to stay, but we made sure of that. And now, also, Wayne County had, was going into communities, they were going door-to-door in areas they felt were vulnerable, to knock on doors to see if any seniors needed assistance. They reached out to us to see if we needed to help doing that. We contacted Club 55. They said their seniors were okay, and they were doing outreach, you know, calls also. We asked people to watch out for their neighbors. Last night, I took the D T E outage map, and I drove around to see if any of the lights were out. I only found one area. So, it looked like most of Canton was back up, which, like I said, we did fare better than some, but not everybody. So, there are a few houses still out, but I'll go drive by tonight and see if they're up yet. But the offer for shelter is always out there, and we can help somebody find shelter if needed. On the potholes, we have 1-800-Road Crew. It's really important to call that. Every day, we get emails on what the road crew's doing in Wayne County. It tells us where they're patching all over Wayne County. And if our residents have potholes they're worried about, please call 1-800-Road Crew and put a ticket in. The tickets are important, because they just don't drive around looking for them. But if they get a ticket, it gives them a listing, and they go to it, and you can look up when that ticket's been closed. And if it hasn't been done properly, you can reopen it and say something. So, tickets are really important to open. Let's see, I think, Woodland Meadows. So, the resident, Mr. Miller's been given information, called Eagle. Eagle said they'd answer all your questions. We sent you a letter. So, if anybody has any questions about any of the landfills, I have a phone number, and a gentleman at Eagle that can answer measurements, status, all that. So, we have that for any resident that needs it. Let me see, and I think that's it. Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? All right, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Great job.